My delectates, the United States of America, and to recover justice on the nation of the God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Such sign notice please.
Board of Commissioners's Public Meeting, Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. The time is now 7:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the summer night, 2021 issue of the Nuthley Sun Herald News Star Ledger. Commissioner Kelly?
Right.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Tucci?
Here.
All present mayor.
I see we have no minutes to be approved this evening. Communications, please.
Thank you, mayor. Holy Family Church has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold their annual Palm Sunday procession on Sunday, April 11 at 11:00 a.m. I need a motion, please.
Move it, sir.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to take things a little out of order this evening. Before we start anything, let me say it's wonderful to see all of you in person. Welcome. We love having you here and please, in the future, come as many times as you want. You're always welcome. So, this is an evening of celebration. We're going to start with our Nuthley Junior Raider Wrestling Team, all right, who has let them distinguish themselves. So I present this resolution on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Nuthley Junior Raider Wrestling Team has enjoyed an outstanding season, posting a league record of 10 wins and no losses. And whereas the members of the Junior Raider Wrestling Team, Eric Arna, Frank Westner, Bozum Jowski, Luke Finkelstein, Savarino Marinelli, Grayson McCann, Chris Cefeli, Ryan Julio, Evan Blanchard, Jack Finkelstein, Kevin Gallagher, Rocco Raffio, Patrick Shell, A.J. Mayden, Michael Coster, Jacob Harlow, Ethan Mayden, Aiden Raab, Shawn Torres, Trace Castellanos, Michael Vianidesco, Susan Belches, Nolan Roore, and whereas head coach Michael Blanchard along with assistant coaches Derrick Gel, Kevin Gallagher, Antonio Mayden, Chad Vermande were tirelessly to train and guide these athletes. And whereas the members of the Junior Raider Wrestling Team were the suburban wrestling league and tournament champions, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nuthley, the County of Essex, and the State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nuthley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the Nuthley Junior Raider Wrestling Team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I proudly move this resolution.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, congratulations.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Congratulations, sir.
Mayor Tucci?
Before I fold, there's just a few things that I'd like to say. Number one, we're not only proud of you for how you perform, we're proud of you for the way you conduct yourself, all right? Your coaches did an outstanding job, and this is an outstanding group of coaches. They trained you properly. They taught you how to be good Nuthley citizens, and they taught you how to be great wrestling. The future is very bright for the Nuthley High School Wrestling Team. We urge you to continue wrestling, do your best at all times, and we will provide all the tools that you need to succeed. I'm proud to go yes. Coach Blanchard, would you like to say a few words?
Of course you can.
You always have to do about it.
Okay, I just want to say thank you very much. I didn't prepare anything, but I'm going to talk for about a half an hour now. We had a great season. One of the things that we've talked a lot about before, man, is gratitude. And we are very grateful for the fact that we got the rest of it. Last year, because of COVID-19, we didn't get to compete. It was very hard on a lot of our kids. You could get a lot of energy, you have a lot of energy to get out. And having a season this year, it wasn't looking so great back in December, early January. We got through it, we were very fortunate the way we did this, just stay safe. But wrestling's not a sport where you can wear a mask. There's no social distancing in wrestling. Social distancing in wrestling is small, so we don't do that. We attack, we go after people who try to score points. We were very fortunate, we got all 10 matches in. I told our guys at dinner, it took us six weeks to get the first five matches. It took us five days to get the second five. So we really had to push to get everything that we wanted this year for our kids. The future is bright. We're not done yet, and we're thankful that you guys recognized this thing. We appreciate it, but we're not done, so thank you.
All right, guys, stay low right there. Everybody won't get cracked and hold the other car.
Good? Thank you, congratulations. So, to continue our celebration this evening, and to continue to celebrate Nuthley and all the good things in Nuthley, starting with our children, our residents, our businesses, and of course, our community. I present this resolution also on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Nuthley Girls Competition Cheer Team has enjoyed an outstanding competition season, posting a four-division championship. And whereas the members of the Girls Competition Cheer Team are Lena Eke, Chloe Bay, Sophia Andia, Kyla Chu, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Chuwa, Zoe Davis, and Jenny Demova, Isabella Fernandez, Jenny Uglusa, Kylie Harrison, Kensington Irwin Dudak, Dylan Jasnewitz, Grace Miller, Kylie Ostrowski, Charlotte Romanowski, Alexis Ocelli, Gabriella Siegel, Angelina Tracia, Cindy Wallace, and Grace Flavio. And whereas head coach Jamie Artisone along with high school volunteers Caitlin Chua, Maddie Quinn, and Gia McAlum were tirelessly to train and guide these athletes. And whereas the members of the Girls Competition Cheer Team are four-time division champions for the 2022 competition season, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nuthley and the County of Essex join with the citizens of Nuthley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the Girls Competition Cheer Team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I proudly move this resolution.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, I forgot. Bottom girls, we can poke it. I bet.
Not like it's going to be any surprise, yeah. But I do want to congratulate the boys' wrestling team and the girls' cheer team. One thing I do want to do is I want to challenge both of you guys, both your teams, to come back here next year. So you just finished the season, but the hard work begins now. The off-season, come back here next year. And I'm sure you ladies want to stay, had you got first, but I also want to recognize, it shows character that the boys didn't just get their athletes to stay. So keep up the good character.
Commissioner Evans?
I'll say congratulations as well. And keep again on the lighter side, I'm sure if you were to reach out, every commissioner would gladly give me some cheering as well as the board's senior.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate the boys too, and I'd like to say a very short story. I'm a mayor. I saw my oldest son started wrestling in 1993, which is not an easy task, I have to tell you. He knew what the legs looked like in every gym that he had. Every single time, except one time because he worked really hard. He ended the kid, finally, the whole team was behind him. The relationships should be better from now. Just keep working hard, you guys are going to be friends for the lifetime. And I don't have any daughters, but I do have a niece that's here. And I know that parents have to drive the whole place, and it's a lot of hard work. You can get injured as a cheerleader today because I know you guys do all those flips and crazy stuff. So again, I'm very proud to go aye for both of you guys. Great job.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Well, I, congratulations, girls. You also have those flyers, Commissioner, in the air. Somebody has a catchings or... So that's a lot of hard work and a little bit dangerous at the same time. As far as you wrestlers, as much as it is a one-on-one when you're on the back, it's also a team sport, right? Say you're on your back, insert the time, helps the team win. So, you know, you both have great teams, and congratulations to both of you.
Mayor Tucci?
Yes, girls, what you have done under the guidance of Jamie and the entire coaching staff is nothing short of phenomenal. We couldn't be prouder of you for what you accomplished. And like the wrestlers, one very proud day, they decided to stay and support our girls, all right? You showed great character. You represented us well, and you made us proud every step of the way. Please continue cheering. We all know now, and some of us who have girls know, cheering hasn't been a compact sport for years. So keep up the good work. Nuthley High School has some great gifts coming. I proudly go yes.
You guys didn't see this yet, so you get to hold it. The boys saw theirs already. They cheated. Maybe a couple of girls in the front will hold that, and everybody else can go around the back. Guys, you can come filter around, taller girls in the back. Hey, guys, if you want, you can pull your mask off for the next one. All right, everybody look to the left, actually, look. Okay, everybody look to the left, big smiles, girls. Say championship.
Everyone is welcome to stay for the duration of our meeting. And I think I'm going to be introducing the budget tonight. Commissioner Evans, this is going to be a bit long with it later. So if you'd like to leave, please do so now, so that you're not your moment to stay. Very much, I thank you. Okay, before we move on to the agenda, I'd like to recognize our Nuthley Boy Scouts Troop 147, who are here this evening satisfying the citizenship and community merit badge requirement. So we welcome your Boy Scouts Troop 147. Thank you for being here. Go to reports. I have a shady report for the month of March 2022. Bill Slavkar?
Thank you, mayor. Bill is for April 5th, 2022. Public affairs, $95,092.89. Revenue and finance, $5,451,882.21. Public safety, $98,454.97. Public works, $318,882.24. Parks and public property, $1,051,389.25. Water utility, $44,996.8. Payroll as of March 18, 2022, regular payroll total, $836,156.17. Overtime payroll total, $38,901.78. Total payroll, $875,057.95. For a grand total of $7,935,755.59.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Will now entertain total comment on the agenda, the mic is over, please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer to some comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Okay, there does not appear that anyone wishes to be heard this evening, so will not entertain Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans, anything this evening?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I actually have three things. On March 30th, the mobile DMV meeting was here. Once again, a very successful turnout. They will be coming back later this year. The DMP time will be posted on the website, but it's yet to confirm. Just want to extend a thank you to the money for taking the knee. Thank you for the place of sports, it goes with it. And our pleasure of having this 44-part gathering is a location. It all works out very well, and we have great teamwork to serve the residents. There is an ongoing point of confusion, which happens, but so so much of it to be clear on, is that in order for the DMV to come back, they actually asked for a list of who's going to be there. And once they hit 50 people, they say, great, we're coming. That doesn't mean they're only going to take 50 people. It just means that they needed to know that it was a compliment. So we'll keep on working on that, but I think it went very, very well, it keeps up the experience. The other one I just raised is that people lose all the licensing on. So all existing homeowners, as well as cats, receive the mayor a reminder to view their license. A reminder about March, it's for the entire amount of people. You can do online, you can take credit card tickets, it's a lot of this, it's been screwed over. You can still come to town, hopefully, with your work, with your hours. However, April 26th and 28th, between 4:30 and 8:30, you'll be having like nine hours. People can register, please, just leave it up. And the other is just every year when we have a pretty great news card, the municipal clerk's office is also at the clinic, they accept the middle registration at that time as well. That's April 25th, and that's not supported. The last thing is just, I picked up on a list, and I think it's out of that site. It started with May 4th. The state's legislation that was enacted in 2020 on stable use of ice packs goes into effect. So rules are quite comprehensive around styrofoam products and two types of ice packs. For example, the shop right here, use them, they can't even walk through the security of this paper bed. The only thing they don't can do is remove it. So the whole, it's all coming up pretty quick. The legislation is actually online, NJ.gov. And businesses that have questions on this can go online at business nj.gov to ask questions, that's how it's like. So just a reminder, this is happening.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kelly? Thank you, mayor. As Commissioner Evans said, we have a ready plan on April 25th. Also, for many of you who have heard, that the FBA has authorized a fourth booster shot for certain individuals. We will be having a booster clinic for those who are just going to get a fourth booster. Or if you haven't got a third booster, you can also get a third booster there. Be on the lookout for more information regarding that clinic or clinics. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scott Kelly?
No one else wants to start? My turn, thank you.
Mr.?
Yes, I am, thank you. I just like to give a big shout out to the county and all the help we have. We received ambulance last week, and it's a brand new ambulance, absolutely. No cost to the taxpayer company. They're able to do it to the local county and Mass Mass. And I have to tell you, it's beautiful. It's totally equipped, it's state of the art, and it's here to serve the county. And it's, who was the Joe Dean, was he really stepped up and has you up? You deserve it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. To continue along the line of celebrations, a little bit different celebration. We received word today that Mr. Anthony Biandi Senior passed away. And we are all saddened by that. But we're also here to celebrate his life. Because Mr. Biandi was one of the pillars of this township. He was involved in so many programs, so many activities, and was always ready to give and give more with his entire family. And he's someone that's absolutely going to be missed. Mr. Biandi was one of the founders, actually, of a memorial tree program. When he was on vacation, that location that he was at, they had a memorial tree program. So upon returning to Nuthley, he approached Mayor Commissioner Park, Frank Caciolo, and said, Frank, this is a wonderful program, it's something we should consider. So Mr. Biandi and Commissioner Caciolo started our memorial tree program. I don't need to get into how successful it is. We're actually running out of space. We have so many trees that we're planting. And over the years, we've also expanded to include memorial benches. This is just one of the things that stands out to my mind that Mr. Biandi has contributed to this township, and he's... If dark words strong enough to describe the impact that he had on this township and what it brings to Nuthley citizens, he was. We also received word today that Bob Gassion Jr., although not a son of Nuthley, absolutely a friend of Nuthley, both Bob Jr. and Bob Senior, was killed in a severe motorcycle accident. So what I'd like to do is ask everyone for a moment of silence, please, too, okay? Thank you very much. Before we get into our agenda, we do require an executive session this evening. Upon return of the executive session, we will have our logical introduction along with entertaining all resolutions that are listed here. So I'll take that motion.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits exclusion of public from meetings to certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nuthley, the County of Essex, and the State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township into close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nuthley, pending and/or anticipated legal, personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exception provided for by the statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
The time is 7:34.
I do apologize for the length of that. We moved as quickly as we could. We had a lot of ground to cover. So we will move into ordinance introductions. Can you start?
My ordinance slide is for the campaign ordinance that we've had earlier. Ordinance number 30491, ordinance to exceed this as well as operation. We're going to establish a campaign. I move that this ordinance be passed in second reading and advertising on the sun to be voted with those part by law. And for the consideration of said ordinance, we find that the board commission has to be held at 7:00 P. M.
May 3rd.
May 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Bishop Patrocco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Commissioner, Commissioner Patrocco.
Yes, I have ordinance number 3492, ordinance to amend an ordinance to provide a public caption without link chapter to give directly to track. For part seven, special zones in areas, section 20 of A, titled handy cat park and the head of the location set for thereon. I move that this ordinance be passed in second reading and I would kind of notify some of the notes part by law that were considered to be settled for passing by permission. You know, on the second reading on.
May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patrocco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patrocco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Commissioner, I see we have no ordinance to exceed me on second reading. Where we have the public hearing. So I will turn the program over to Commissioner Evans for the 2022 municipal ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that screen on? Tonight, we have here by statute introduced our budget. And the budget document itself will be available online tomorrow with all of this presentation. And we just want to know, can you go to the next slide, please? Is anybody here, Martha? I'll speak later. I'm just trying to get the logistics straight. And please don't, if you can't hear me, please don't hesitate. Just shout it out and I'll try and get it on, okay? All right, so tonight, as I've done in the past, I try to take the very rudinous state budget document and try and summarize that for purposes of discussion and presentation of the budget. On this slide, this is a one-page summary of what the budget looks like. On the first line, it says total operating costs for 2022 or total operating costs, we just have here 58 million, 82,000, $86. And that's a 1,593,000, so we are increase over last year or 2.2%. Overall, our revenues are 14 million, 837,111 dollars, which is a $92,000 increase, 92,000 increase over 21, which is less than 1%. Overall, the amount that we need to raise for taxpayers is 43 million, 244,905 dollars, which is 1,500,264 dollars more than 21, which equates to 3.54%, 3.6% increase over 21. Our operating costs, which I'll get into on the next slide, have increased our revenues have remained stable. And that trend is likely to continue if we go to the next slide, revenue changes. So so far as up here, the changes in revenue most important is in the upper left, combined state aid is that in 2022, we've been able to stabilize our aid from the state at 5247,630 dollars. This is inclusive of the fact that we are no longer subject to application for temporary or transitional state aid. And we were able to, as part of the negotiation last year was to actually negotiate a permanent basis going forward, the additional aid of 2.6 million dollars. So we're no longer having to be subject to state inquiry on our budget. We're no longer subject to what the budget negotiations are. And if you remember from past years, we were never able to really move forward with the adoption of our budget until after July 1st, because the state is on a fiscal year basis, on a year basis. In our total, our major changes in our revenue, right now, we have an increase in revenues for our emergency service, readyness services for the full year, affected that of 133,000 dollars. Commissioner, Tractor and I had a conversation along with the board that we are going to continue to follow up with that to see if we can anticipate more revenue than we are currently. It will require approvals from the state to do that, as well as just more records investigation when our revenue building company see if that number can be related to the increase, which I hope we can. Construction for maintenance, the fact that the activity co-operations remains robust. So we're anticipating that we can increase our maintenance revenues by 75,000 dollars. All the other revenue categories we have in the town basically net in the 47,000 dollar increase in the very state. So when you look at this, your gross revenue increase is 250,000, settling out to our legal state aid number was a reduction in state aid of 162,500 dollars, or then any of the 92,800 dollars. Basically, what I look at when I evaluate our revenues, our revenue level is that our revenue basically remains stable in that 14 million, 800,000 dollar level, and we'll see major increases or changes right now. There's some new development going on in town that's anticipating that can add to our revenue level. We would not be able to anticipate that until a future year, which is more likely to occur in 2020. If we move on to the operating costs. Here, this is on one page, it covers all five departments of township, as well as the library, which we're obligated to support from the state's statute. And so it's divided into two categories, what happens in salary increases and what's happening with other expense categories. At present time, salaries are over 796,000 dollars in two departments, two other areas of our flat. In addition to that, we have every year, we have an annual sewer bill that we receive for sewer-related services. That bill increased this year, 221,000 dollars, and it's been steady in terms of its increases each year, about 225,000. The pension area is is a bill as well that we receive from the state. And as you can see, the pension increase for lace fire and the other departments. The D R P is the Early Retirement Incentive Program, based out of the question of that, which occurred back in 2005, 2006 timeframe. We may have let's in on that network last year, so it actually the budget is this much. That's a one-time adjustment, will not recur next year. Medical benefits in the past, we actually had some declining costs in the medical insurance area. The shift will bill increase to stabilize the base or increase in your medical cost by 215,000 dollars. And without too much explanation, we know what's going on with that gas comp. Our anticipated cost for gasoline are rising with about 115,000 to keep the vehicles moving for all departments in the town. The reserve from the taxes is slightly up. That's a statutory requirement, as well as the 30,000 dollars for the library or for the statutory. The A adjustment, while we lost 162,000 of aid, we didn't have to have an appropriation for 105,000 for the school in the county. So really, the net effect of the revenue loss is net at about 56, 57,000 dollars. The answer is, we've been managing our debt very effectively. We do not have any debt on the chicken lady property to stay off this year. We have our normal debt that we have standing, which is generally around 14 million dollars, which is well below the initial borrowing power, which is over 140 million dollars. So we're about 10% of what we have the capacity for, but we never come actually. And if you go across all the other expenses areas, the categories less than 25,000 dollars must be adjusted by about 14,000 dollars. Other than that, we don't have to do that. So if you look at this then, it was to increase the first slide. Salaries are about 796,000 dollars, expenses are about 696,000 dollars, as I explained, for total cost increase of 1,500,000. Our salaries, this is not final, and then contract negotiations are still pending. Corralty units, and that will be on running, hopefully will have greater direction. I'm very worried we will not have those negotiations before we have to adopt our budget limit third. And as I said, when you look at the basis of how things that drive the cost increases are very, very direct. It's salaries, sewer, pension, medical, or the current cost, sewer pension, medical, or bills that we get from the state, all the sewer and members of from the state that come in each year and obligated to pay those. So overall, that's what's going on with our expenses. So as I said on the first slide, you have the debt increase to the taxpayers was 15 million dollars, roughly 3%, 5.6% increase in the tax revenues and taxpayers, as explained in this presentation. To look at something else, if you go to the next slide, we do have a water sector, water utility. We did experience a cost increase, increases in the utility predominantly from our water providers, so North Jersey, Newark. When we get water from, they can increase the cost of water. We see higher bills from that for the water that we use. We do have some some increase in our debt service and a number of changes in the water utility or about 10,000 dollars. Overall, right now, even though we had a cost increase in the utility, we're not expecting that we will need a rate increase for 2022. So while the cost will not, we don't need to affect the tariff or the utility rate at this time. In the last slide, just things that are next step, we will continue to address before May 3rd. We continue to review departmental changes to identify additional potential reductions. All of the commissioners have committed to do that. We do that every year, trying and continue to stay on top of that and see what we can find. And in the past, we've been successful between counter adoption to plant some of the things that reduce the tax increase to the taxpayers. We still have to deal with union contract negotiations for all of the units, all of their contracts that expire and open up to negotiation. Materials for the budget, as I mentioned earlier, will be up on the website tomorrow. This presentation will be on the website tomorrow. And hard copy of the of the budget document is available at the library. And if someone wants that, they can file a request for. Last thing is just a reminder, we'll have a hearing. Last thing, this is a serious reminder, we'll have a hearing on the budget as it's presented, and the adoption of the curve right now, let's get it. There. Right now, we, as a board, we will go down to the introduction, the municipal budget for two thousand twenty-two. Sheet two of the actual budget document, this will like those, it's also speeding as a resolution in two thousand twenty-two. Municipal budget for the township of Nuthley County assets, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, we have resolved the following statements of revenue appropriations shall constitute municipal budget for the year two thousand twenty-two. The further result of this sent back to republish in the public sun, in the issue of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, already valid, your township has nothing that's hereby approved, the following budget for the year two thousand twenty-two, as presented in the budget document as presented in the presentation. So.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner, would you like to continue with your resolution?
Sure. The result of the board's decision to the township of Nuthley County, the Jersey, the township has given our question of the overpayment to high standards, the amount of six thousand one hundred seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents for block eight, seven, one, block forty-eight, with two thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents, and for block eight, one, block one, O R C, three, zero, one, eight, with three thousand three hundred, and seventy-four dollars and seven cents for that total of six thousand one hundred seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
My next two resolutions are temporary budget authorizations, which are required by statute for where to continue operate government until the new budget is adopted, we have to break under temporary authorizations. So, resolution one oh eight, H twenty-two, whereas NJSA forty-eight, H twenty-five, as a contract commitment or maintenance are to be paid prior to the final adoption of the two thousand twenty-two budget, emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for the purposes and amounts required in the manner and time they're entered by, whereas the total emergency temporary resolution adopted for the year two thousand twenty-two was shown in provisions, which have their ninety-sixty on nineteen fifty-one, including this resolution, total sixteen million, seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents, now they're corporate themselves. Under court of NJSA forty-eight, Court of Justice, twenty-one, the emergency temporary appropriation can be same, are here, in the total amount of sixteen million, seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. That said, emergency temporary appropriation will be provided for in the twenty-two budget for the accounts and the progress that are included in the resolution, so.
Second. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
My next resolution is set in line with twenty-two, it's the same as the previous resolution under NJSA forty-eight, Court of Justice, twenty, except that it's specific to the utility budget. Sorry, we resolved part of that, we resolved that force with NJSA forty-eight, Court of Justice, twenty-one, for the temporary appropriation through the utility, being the same are here, but in the total amount of one million one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy, that's it, emergency temporary appropriation will be provided for the utility budget for the accounts of the board 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 of the[1078.62]